Hey, please, rocks.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, and for the King of Justice.
Welcome to our January twenty-third meeting. We have warrants that we have signed. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting on January ninth?
So long.
Second.
Yes.
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 And motion to the regular meeting.
So long.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
And do we have any public comment?
Yes. I have a couple. First of all, I just want to say publicly what a great job the road department's been doing with the roads this past, you know, week. I think they need to be commended. Also, I think the fire department should be commended for the amount of donations that they're procure. I mean, the cost saves to the township, it's phenomenal, and I think we ought to recognize that publicly. The main belief's not here. I just, so maybe it's when she watches this, you know, I don't mind being quoted, just get it accurate. So.
Amen. Can you interrupt?
That's okay, because I'm glad I'm not the only one feeling that way. Third point, I found it interesting by watching the news, we in Munson have forty-eight miles of road with six guys that take care of them. Chardon Village or Chardon City, whatever you want to call it, has thirty-eight miles of road and twelve full-time guys that take care of it. It's, I found it very interesting that they have six, uh, six guys that work twelve hours shifts on during the day and six guys that work twelve hours a day. So when you take that into consideration with us having forty-eight miles of road and six guys, I think the road department is doing a phenomenal job.
I, uh, I have to go with David. I would like to wish somebody, are you done?
Well, he was, I was, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'd like to wish somebody a happy birthday here today.
We get my age, it's a number.
Oh, shucks.
Doug, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now it's in the record, so now we.
No, it isn't.
Hi, what do they have? Any other public comment? Uh, Chief Ed?
Chairman, trustees, thanks for the opportunity here to speak. As you see in front of you, we've got our two thousand twenty-three annual report out. A lot of the same information highlighted as previous years. The idea is to kind of show some of the trends, some of the responses. A lot of it is pretty standard, it's pretty uniform, and you're probably pretty familiar with it being the liaison for the number of years. Calls increase, the percentages kind of increase associated with it. Munson is a little unique because there's no day of the week that is really more, um, busier or we have more calls than any other day, the same with time of the night. That isn't highlighted in this report, but when you go through and you look at trends and you look at different things, that's the case. So if you go through the two thousand twenty-three responses, total for the year was fifteen hundred and seventy-nine responses. Those are outlined up above by the month. As you can see at the bottom, total for each month, we average about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty calls a month. Some were a little less, some were a little more, log averages there. Talks about our auto raid responses that were given in two thousand twenty-three. A lot of those responses and percentages are really no different than two thousand twenty-two. So two thousand twenty-two is back about another two pages in this, so you can see kind of as a comparison, okay? Total MVAs in Munson Township, we usually run about a hundred a year and we, uh, talk about basically classifying as injury and non-injury. So injury, we're transporting people to the hospital, non-injury, we're basically signing no transports, which comes into the EPCR's down the road and we talk about the EMS calls. The reason I say that is we have more EPCR's than we do total number of incidents because one car accident might have three or four patients. Overlapping calls for two thousand twenty-three, two hundred and ninety-five calls, and that's a nineteen percent. Last year, we had two hundred and sixty-nine and we had seventeen percent. So remember in two thousand twenty-two, our total call volume was sixteen hundred and fifteen calls, just a little bit more than this year. Let's say somewhere in the vicinity of sixteen calls, it was one percent more, but yet our overlapping calls this year were two percent compared to last year. Couple pictures of us going auto eight and in Township. The bottom one was this morning when they went to the interstate towing fire. Two thousand twenty-two responses, there you see sixteen hundred and eighteen for the year along with the same data down below. So you can see what last year was as a comparison to this year. We start talking about fires, building fires, forty-two for the year. Those were either in Munson or Munson responded to them. So a building fire is classified as, it could very well be as easy as the interstate towing fire, or it could be that trash can on fire over there. A fire in an enclosed structure is still classified as a building fire. And then it breaks down, as you see, one thousand sixty-three EMS calls. When we go to the next one, EMS response by category, you'll see abdomen pains up, respiratory stresses up, chest pain sixty-six. So that's sixty-six out of our total of eleven hundred and ninety-five. And then you'll see how that breaks down. We did a risk assessment on Munson Township and Munson Township, under that risk assessment, strokes and falls were recognized. And those are two things we can do through community education, handrails, working with the Department of Aging and trying to move forward with that to make sure there aren't as many falls. Some of those falls are caused by a medical issue or problem, diabetes, low blood sugar, and, you know, education's another way we can try to work through that. As far as we talk about, uh, strokes, going to the doctor, hypertension, being on blood pressure medications to make sure that people don't have distress and they don't have the, uh, the hypertension, which are the risk factors. If you look at the chest pain one, it's sixty-six, that's five point five percent of the total EMS calls. So last night, in the middle of the night, um, our road department does a great job, but we still have, we can't keep them out there twenty-four seven. So we've got AC conditions, we have more or less crappy road conditions. We received a chest pain call. It was kind of a long response to where it was in Zone One, District One of Munson Township, but still we were within the goal of the door of blown time of under sixty minutes by university hospitals. So, um, the standard of care we're providing, the paramedic service, the equipment we have, still second to none here in Munson Township. So some of the goals from EMS contact to, um, EKG is supposed to be under ten minutes. They were at seven. So I can go through and just hit all these, um, parameters and we're meeting all those goals. We're exceeding them, except it took a long time to get there because of the road conditions. We're better off getting there than sliding in the ditch and calling you too late and not getting there, so.
Being on the news of the fire truck during the recent.
Did you see the one on Facebook? I don't know who was driving that, but. Glad I wasn't sitting there.
Because there was one in Chester, there was one in like Virginia, and then there was another one that the guy, he just clipped the mirror in the car, he missed everything but the little mirror and the mirror was one of those retractable ones, so it's pretty.
So, so remember the fire trucks anymore, an average M S is costing eight hundred to a million dollars. The downtime, tube your build time, those are all considerations that we need to keep in, in the back of our mind when we're responding and, you know, uh, replacement costs, insurance, all that stuff. We're going back to, the pages aren't numbered, but EMS billing revenue, talks about, uh, total transports nine hundred and fifty-one for two thousand twenty-three. EMS billing collections was down five percent last year, partially due to November, December, having issues with integration through the hospital for payments with Medicon. So that's been taken care of and the first two months of this year should be a little bit, um, of an increase. If we look at comparisons to two thousand twenty-two, there were nine hundred and ninety-seven transports. So we were down approximately, you know, forty or so. Talk about different training highlights and professional development, who's gone to what throughout this year, some of that's documented. Once again, our annual burn training at the Covia Homes, three thousand eight hundred and forty-seven, uh, training hours logged for the year, combined fire and EMS. Then we get to the, uh, one new paramedic on our roster, he resides in Newbury. He's part-time Dalton Hall. Fire inspections for the year, basically the same as last year, you know, Doug tries to get a hundred percent compliance. We have ninety-three commercial dwellings that house a hundred and thirty-seven businesses. The numbers don't match, but when we look at a strip mall, there can be five businesses on one commercial property. So that's the gist of that. Different things that Doug's done through the years. He had twenty-one hundred hours logged in his Fire Prevention Bureau, handling inspections, speaking with meetings, various architects, builders, engineers, and, uh, basically just completing the mission. And that is, uh, you know, trying to promote fire prevention and keep the fires from happening. The more money we spend in that, the better off we actually are than actually going and putting them out with the number of people, resources, equipment, and what it's costing nowadays. Doug's, uh, education, what he's gone to, and then publication for public education programs that we provide. Our residential knockbox program has approximately sixty residential boxes out. Our commercial program has approximately seventy, um, commercial boxes out. So, um, we are constantly, uh, recycling some of those when people move and we're constantly adding new. Fire prevention plans for two thousand twenty-four is to try and move with the Citizens Fire Academy and try and make it happen this year. Current apparatus fleet, here's all the vehicles, and the red is the replacement year and just a small description of them. Engines should last twenty years, uh, the towers should last twenty-five years. And with this program, the squads are an eight-year rotation. As you see, there's one pickup truck without a designated year. Probably not going to replace that, we'll probably consolidate and make that twenty-five hundred HD. It'd be a long truck, but throw a plow on it or try to consolidate and do something with the road department for as often as we're using a pickup truck. We can visit that and have maybe a dual-use truck. Pump tests for two thousand twenty-three, they were done and all the ladder tests, everything passed. Some of our ground ladders needed a little bit of maintenance and a little, uh, repair and replacements and some stickers, some heat labels, not that big of a, uh, an issue other than, uh, normal preventative maintenance on the vehicles. Some got tires, that was basically it for the year. Repacked some of the pump packings because of the age, one being a two thousand fifteen, one being a two thousand sixteen. We finally wore out the adjustment, we couldn't adjust them anymore. The Ohio Department of EMS grant, um, three thousand dollars for seat belts, that's back up to where it normally is. At one point, it went down to seven hundred due to COVID and due to them not writing tickets. We get into capital improvements for two thousand twenty-four. We've got two life packs that are currently, uh, those are our cardiac monitors. They're basically, uh, version one, they're obsolete, we can't get parts anymore. We run a costly maintenance, um, program for these. Anytime these are serviced, everything's covered, it's à la carte. We, uh, went on a call to the thirteen thousand Sisters of Notre Dame. After the call, we looked at the monitor, there's a plastic cover over the LCD screen. It has a huge gouge taken out of it. No one could recall when exactly that happened. You call the, you know, service guy, he would have charged us to come out, he would have charged us four hundred for the screen and he would have charged us time. Our contracts, that's all encompassing, and we have a Cadillac plan for those contracts. So our contract will no longer cover those two monitors because of the age and being obsolete and not having parts. So two of those need to get upgraded sometime within the next year. And capital building improvements, it would be nice to, you know, move ahead with Guardian Security to have some sort of fire. And, uh, we read about fire stations catching on fire and not being able to complete the mission and not being able to move forward and, and do what we do. We're operating out of pickup trucks. We, we kind of can't operate out of pickup trucks if we don't have city hydrants, hydrants and water, so sustainability. Lot to take in. If you have any questions, feel free to call me, email me.
Can I ask a question now?
Sure.
I'm just curious about, uh, this designation of the different kinds of calls. What is a good intent call?
So it doesn't really fall into anything else, okay? So, uh, when we go to a power line down, it, is it really a power line? Is it a cable line? Is it whatever? When we go to different things, um, is it smoke in a structure? Is it an odor investigation? Somebody thought they smelled rotten eggs in the house, right? So is it natural gas? Is it sewer gas coming from a dry trap? That could be classified as a good intent call. We go through there with a meter looking for H two S, which is silvan酸酸ide, which would say that there's, um, natural gas in the structure. I have no readings. So do I put it in as a natural gas call? Because there really wasn't any natural gas there. So good intent.
It's better than using miscellaneous.
I see, okay. And then I could, can you, I'm, I will, I will read this, but I'm interested in the Fire Academy. Can you just say a little more about that?
So the Citizens Fire Academy, um, I'll, I'll just let Doug talk about it if you don't mind.
That was a nice.
You're the chief. It's a group of citizens. Probably we would take no more than twelve fourteen, because bigger the group, it's harder to handle. They would come here for about seven nights, most probably on Thursday, because that seems to be easier than a Monday, Tuesday than, than Wednesday. Time would be from maybe six to nine, six-thirty to nine-thirty, uh, when the light gets a little bit longer outside. The first class should be upstairs, we go through our operation, finance, how we finance our operation, things like that. Second class would be, uh, maybe EMS. You'll have a CPR card, uh, stop the bleed, things like that, like the road department went through for a couple hours. Then you go down and see what medical trucks carry, how the defibrillator works, Lucas machine, things like that. Third class, you'll be given a fire gear. See what, see what it weighs, put an air tank on your back, see what that weighs, carry an axe. And altogether, you're about two hundred and fifty pounds, you know, just things like that.
Yeah.
Uh, you'll handle a hose, we'll squirt some water someplace out back. One class, auto extrication. Here's the cutters, cut the car apart, you know, see how heavy this kind of stuff is from the gas powered to the, uh, battery powered, you know, how we cut a car up. If you want to go up in the bucket seventy-five feet, you can take a ride up, see how high we can go with a nozzle, how far we can shoot the water, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
So it's a program designed to basically learn the in and outs of what we do and how we operate and how we're funded.
And see what your money's going for.
Yeah.
One night we'll go over dispatch, we'll go over to dispatch. Has anybody here been in county dispatch? See where your nine-one-one number goes? Today, they had some fun up there for about three hours without a fire, you know, handling all the departments come. It's an educational thing.
Do, and have you had, uh, you've had this idea for a while and is it coming from interest from the community or?
Other departments have done it. The first one Bainbridge did, they had thirty-two in the class, which is way too many, way too many. But, uh, we started, what, about four years ago, the idea, Mike?
Yeah.
But then COVID, three years in a row, not that deal and, you know, we got everything pretty much put together, the itinerary, just the dates, you know, maybe the times. It'll be in the newsletter and, uh, like I say, the twelve, maybe the first twelve, fourteen, fifteen, then that would be a cutoff.
Would you take high school students? Or does it have to be adults?
No, I, I would rather have taxpayers first, okay? Now, as time goes on, uh, if we have a mini, we could have a mini one maybe, if we had six, eight seniors, eleven, twelfth graders, yeah, it'd be something to do. Maybe wouldn't be as extensive, but, you know, it'd be, you know, it'd still get something out of it. And maybe it will lead them to volunteer someplace or go on to medic school and.
Yeah, that's what.
Get a job, you know, we see if the interest is there.
We've done different programs with like Capstone and we have had people ride, their parents have signed a waiver. We've kept an eye, an eye on them, is, you know, the person in charge to make sure that they didn't get into something that maybe they shouldn't or see something that maybe, um, isn't appropriate, you know?
Do you ever work with the Auburn Career Center?
I teach under there, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was something.
Yeah, we've had classes down here, we've held the two forty class for Auburn down here probably ten, twelve classes up to about ten years ago when they started developing their, uh, outside training grounds.
They, they ride here, we're an accredited site with them.
Yeah, for the erratic class, yeah.
Okay.
And Jog rides here also with us.
Okay.
Chief, you mentioned that fifty-seven minutes, that's huge, that's bigger than, you know, kind of toot your own horn a little bit, because I did just tour the hospital and met the heart surgeon and his goal is ninety minutes from the minute that call is to there, you say balloon, you know, that he's, that person's safe and, and healthy. So that, you definitely gotta give credit to that fifty-seven minute, that's huge, you know, that's, you know, they're shooting for ninety and you well exceeded that, so that's a feather in your cap and a thank you to the, to the, to the guys that boots on the ground.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they do a good job, they continue to, um, meet all the expectations, they strive for the best. When you see what we're up against, um, it's like a card game, right? Who knows what you're going to get dealt to you? They have the weather, so not only do they have the weather, that team, once activated, also has the weather to get in there and then do the procedure or the job. So the quicker everything happens, um, the better the outcome and the quicker.
Jim, do you want to do this?
Are we doing this now?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the title for the tanker truck to Township?
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mike.
And I'd like to just let the record reflect that Mike did return to active duty on one eighth on his medical year.
January eighth.
January.
That's actually, I just took.
Phil Alman?
Yeah. Any questions?
He gave me my reading material for next week.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Walker?
Well, as you can see, we have a lot of weight on our sheet, so that's what we've been doing. We're playing in the snow and in between that, we've been working on our equipment, getting stuff ready for summer and spring and, and different things like that. And, uh, yeah, the guys did a phenomenal job, they learned quite a bit this morning. Some of the young fellows didn't know, uh, some tricks of the trade with, uh, driving on this kind of ice. So as we're driving along and, and, um, I hear on the radio, I can't stop my truck and he's going down a hill and it's a pretty big ravina if you've been up on Stone Gate. He was heading down the last one and that, that ravine's pretty steep down there. And I told him, I said, put it neutral. And he, he put it neutral and it just straightened right back up and he drove, drove out of it. And, uh, when we got back to the yard, the, the fellow said, uh, I've never heard that trick before. I said, well, you guys, most of you guys aren't old enough to have driven a standard transmission before. So I said, this, this is what you do when you put the clutch in and, and get the truck under control. And, and we're only going one, two miles an hour maybe. He was going down the hill at approximately fifteen, twenty miles an hour sliding because the driver of the truck was still pushing him and they'd never heard of that before. So they, they learned something pretty, pretty, pretty good, uh, for them to throw in the toolbox for, for future ice storms. Once you get through an ice storm like that, it, it, the rest of the stuff is nothing. Those, those are the worst, the worst conditions out there and like Mike said, when they weren't out there and, you know, we can't be out there totally, we were there, I was out at two o'clock in the morning and it was, there was not very much on the road and I drove around in some bad spots and then the guys were in it at three-thirty and proceeded to put it down. And it was, the, the county roads were the same, the state roads were kind of better. They had more, more fellows out with salt all night long in the rain. We can't, we can't justify that, so they did, they did a great job keeping, keeping what we had going. And there was very little traffic out, which was good, school buses weren't out and it was, uh, people realized it was bad enough to stay home. So it was, it was quite an accident. Ice storm draws.
Well, I know you say thank you to the guys, but thank you to you too, because like I said, that Saturday afternoon, Mike called me and I called you and you were out there on Shore Road in a couple of minutes, so it's a team effort, so it's.
Can I have a motion to set the public hearing for the zoning amendment two thousand twenty-three dash oh two?
Uh, what time are we doing? Six-thirty?
Six.
Make that motion, uh, February thirteenth at six o'clock.
Second.
Yes.
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 A motion to accept the Township, uh, mileage certification.
Did we ever get a hospital drive off our?
I do not believe so.
You didn't, you went through the paperwork.
Yeah, that's twin lawyers.
Yeah.
Do they still want to do it?
We haven't maintained anything in the last two, three years.
They're doing, they're doing the maintenance, but the, I know the county agent, not county.
Some got stuck, I forget now, it's.
County commissioners had it and they were talking to the hospital.
So right now, it's still on there?
Yes.
It's listed, but I think that mileage was taken off because of, I noticed our, our revenue that comes based on mileage.
It's lost.
Yes, it dropped when they did that. Not a lot, it's a few, few now.
Uh, you made a motion, Matt?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-three highway mileage certification.
Second.
Yes.
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 Where's the sign, there's two copies.
I'd like to follow up on that, was that the commissioners or is that, is that the chose to tell? We did our, we did our.
We did our part, because I talked to their attorney and I did, we did all our part. It was up to the county commissioners, had to do something.
Right, I'll, I'll ask and report back. There was a sign here.
Don't sign it, that's fine.
Uh, this is more just let the record reflect that we've got a letter from, uh, County Prosecutor Jim Flay's about the cannabis, um, correspondence on what we can, what we can regulate, what we can't. I don't think anybody's done anything yet, um, but it's, uh, some information to share.
Yeah, and he signed over a model resolution, so we will be addressing it sometime in the future. Okay, go bring that.
Did you have a chance to look, you wanted to look at Nero Park or something and then to tell you?
I did, I, I looked at everything, I went to all the parks and I, um, I mean, we have, uh, we have a lot of picnic tables, but it seems to me that Nero Park could use a couple more. So my thought was that, and then, then we also talked about, um, Um, and so my thought was that, and then, then we also talked about, um, so the trash cans in terms of where we're at with that now. I, I know Andy has more information, but my understanding was that, um, we haven't put together the trash cans that we, we got in the past.
All of them?
All of them.
How many are left?
Three.
How many?
Three, three.
And how many are, uh, so are there, where are?
We have four, uh, two in the cemetery.
Okay.
When we only had one open deal last year.
So, what I'd like to see, when, after thinking about it, is the trash cans that we have that haven't been put together. If we could try those at a baseball field where we, we put them together, we see how it works to require the baseball teams to, to empty them into the hoppers. See how that works before we get six more and put them to baseball fields. Let's use what we have, then do that, then, then see how that goes. Cause my understanding is that this grant is annual, we can apply for it year after year and we have. Get some picnic tables now, now, and I do understand that would require us to, um, amend or we'd have to redraft the grant. Because right now it's drafted to buy six trash cans. So, my thought was that we could redraft it, authorize Paul to, to go forward with it on a, a picnic tables plan. But like I said, I know Andy has information too.
Well, for one, I think the park board should be involved in the picnic table discussion because that's the nature of their, their role. But the other thing is, we buy two, just like we have two out there that we got from a couple of years ago. We'll never get those picnic tables to match. And I really think we should, if we're gonna do it, we should get the park board suggestion on what style they want and buy fifty of them to replace the fifty that we have. And we can sell the wooden ones that we have or.
Sixty-eight.
Oh, is it sixty-eight? Oh, I kinda, oh, I must not counted one of the parks when I added up the number four.
We have sixty-eight total picnic tables? Okay.
But some of them are already, two of them are already, uh, two back here are already all Hollywood.
Right, yes.
So, what I would, I mean, I would like to get the park board's opinion and say which style they want and I would like to replace all of them. And we could sell the wooden ones for, I think the park district sold theirs for like forty bucks a piece or something like that. Whether we get forty or fifty bucks a piece, we could sell them to offset some of the cost.
If we did the picnic tables, we gotta, what's the, you said the date on this was February third?
February second.
February second. Can, can Nate rewrite this and get two picnic tables by February second if we authorize? Cause it's up to thirty-five hundred, so if we go over it, we gotta make the difference up.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I just think then you get two more picnic tables that won't match everything and will be. I'd rather get the trash cans, get them to the ball fields and make sure the kids use them.
I, I'm also, I mean, I, I think there is something to the idea that more trash cans equals more trash and you've gotta be careful about that.
Well, that's why you put it in the agreement and it's in the agreement with the high school, but we put in an agreement with the, the other users of the field that they have to empty those trash cans at night. And if they don't, you charge them seventy-five dollars, that's what we've done at the high school the last couple of years.
And then would we remove the trash cans for the period of the year when they're not, when baseball's not going on?
We do not.
We, yeah.
Other than, other than a cemetery.
You leave those at the cemetery?
Well, that would help. Cause I, I mean, that's part of your concern, right, or that, that, um, there's, there's trash, people bring their own trash.
Yeah, no, it's the fast lane park, we, we go through several times and we have eight cans on top and four cans down below. And four, four of the cans on top will have household trash in it, um, and we haven't had a party there or anything.
Yeah, and we see that at the other parks, I know scenic has it once or twice.
Yeah, scenic gets a little bit, not as often, um, it's, it's more visible right there on top of people being in there. Uh, the problem with the baseball fields is that they have not been emptying them. I know the softball fields, they have their own cans and they take care of them and they bag it and bring it up and put it in the cans. Uh, the baseball, the boys down below there, it's always a, it's always a struggle to get them, get it up there by Thursday. And I know we put it in, and, and they head down a little better with it, uh, or, or so-called fine or whatever. But, uh, it does cost us time and money to go down and maintain that and clean up what, you know, pulls around and, and. And they, they take the totes down there, they wheel them down and they just fill them up till they're over full and they don't bring them back up. And, and that's essentially what's gonna happen with every, any, any of them down there. We'd like to bring some more over here, if you wanna buy these ball fields. This one has one, we could put a couple more down below there and eliminate some of the ones that fast lane. And maybe deter some of the household trash going into them. Those cans we do own.
We've got a deadline on the grant. We've got trash cans that we're not using now. I wanna, I wanna make a motion to authorize Nate McDonald to sign this as the authorized official for two picnic tables up to thirty-five hundred. To match as best as that he can find, um, by the deadline for the February second application. Just to get it off the.
We have to see it though, he has to get it to us before they can approve it.
That Nate and Andy approve on which, uh?
We should approve it today, but you know it's.
Oh, yeah, he doesn't know what color he's getting.
Well, I'm just saying, we need to, we need to see the final application.
I, I can show it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Second.
Further discussion, if that, you guys pick something that works that we could use and, and if it doesn't, then we let it go. If it does, if it works, it works, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
These are, these are green, right? And, uh, it's probably available.
It's not available though, that's the problem, that model is not available.
You like, you like, you just got.
Yeah.
So, try to match as best you can, if it doesn't work, then let the grant go.
Yes.
So, that's, uh, is that tied to get a motion in there to?
Yeah. I can make something on that.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Do you want me to com- comment on any of these or just wanna go for it?
Uh, yeah, go ahead and comment. Which one are we, what are we on first?
The first one, the twenty-four oh two is a, is a standard one that we do every year. It's to, um, allow me to allocate the funding for the, the EMS billing money that comes in for the lease payments and then to pay the private party.
This was the recommendation from the press, uh, auditor's office?
Yes, that's why, that's why we're doing it every year.
Who would agree? Okay. Um, so, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two be resolved by months of township trustees in regular session. The twenty-third day of January twenty twenty-four with the, uh, members present, Jim, Andy and Nate. That Jim move the adoption of the following resolution as presented for EMS fund, funding.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
So, it's standard operating, right?
Yep. Okay, the next one is that opioid settlement money that arrived. I learned that I have to have that set, placed in a separate fund, initially just a positive and a general fund. But the guidance says create a special revenue fund, so procedurally, you guys have to prove that and I have to send it to the auditor of state.
So, have another fund? I don't have it.
Okay, uh, so, I'll make a motion to pass this resolution. Resolution establishing a special revenue fund for opioid settlement. Be resolved by the trustees of Munson Township in a regular session on the twenty-third day of January twenty twenty-four. With the following members present, Andy, Jim and Nate. That, uh, I, Nate moved for the op- option of the following resolution. Whereas the people of the state of Ohio and its communities have been harmed by misfeasance, nonfeasance and malfeasance committed by certain entities within the pharmaceutical supply chain. And whereas the state of Ohio through its attorney general and certain local governments, through their elected representatives and council, engaged in litigation seeking to hold pharmaceutical supply chain participants accountable for the damage caused by their misfeasance, nonfeasance and malfeasance. And whereas the state of Ohio through its governor and attorney general and its local governments share a common desire to abate and alleviate the impacts of that misfeasance, nonfeasance and malfeasance throughout the state of Ohio. And whereas Munson Township completed formal documents relating to the allocation and use of the proceeds of settlements described and has received dispersments from said settlements. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Township Trustees of Munson Township shall, one, establish the following special revenue fund for opioid settlement dispersments. Fund twenty-nine oh four special assessment opioid settlement. And two, direct the fiscal officer to submit the request for fund twenty-nine oh four for approval to the auditor of the state of Ohio.
Second.
Yes.
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 Resolution.
Any color on oh four? No, it's more than a dollar at least.
Right.
Right? Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four be resolved by the trustees of Munson Township in regular session on the twenty-third day of January with the following members present, Andy, Jim and Nate. That Jim move the adoption of the following resolution, that the twenty twenty-four temporary appropriations be amended as follows. Transfers within funds in the EMS fund twenty-two eighty-one and within fund transfer as follows. Twenty thousand to contracted services from other professional and technical services.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Todd, what is that opioid settlement fund, what do they use those funds for, if it's in a special?
Yeah, that's, that's why I'd have to go into a special fund because it's restricted, the spending has to be targeting, um, a response to the opioid crisis. Opioid abuse issues, so, um, it hasn't been determined exactly yet what the spending, you know, made by Narcan, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's certain things that's part of that, that you can spend.
I mean, the fact that it's being segregated, I wonder, is it like the training, is it for?
It can be for training and things like that.
How much money is it?
Eleven hundred dollars.
A thousand, a thousand dollars.
About a hundred and forty-four or something like that.
The next thing is the, um, audit, you're aware this is an audit year for Munson. Um, you guys get to decide if you want the full-blown audit or the agreed upon procedures option. And it's not my call, it's on us.
When was the last time we did a, a full audit?
Two years ago.
And the last one.
I think the agreed upon procedures is fine for, I mean, we did a full audit, what, two years ago and, uh, basically passed with flying colors except for somebody didn't have their sunshine law training certificate. That was me. I went to the class and did the class, they just couldn't find my certificate, so. But I think we should.
I'm agree, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
You want that in a motion?
Yeah.
Want, want the agreed upon procedure?
Yeah.
An AUP audit and then, um, we'll put together the items that we want them to look at.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to have a AUP township audit for twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I'm curious.
Is this the same audit that was talked about several meetings ago for the fire department?
No, this is the actual township audit, fire department audit will follow after.
You ready? Done? I make a motion that the trustees shall report the total number of days worked in the preceding month to the fiscal office by the seventh day of the next month on the form provided and indicating the dates and tasks performed as a trustee.
Second.
Yes.
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 So, I also make a motion that the trustees will be paid monthly using the per diem method for ORC five oh five point two four at the daily rate of seventy-five dollars and fifty-two cents as set by the Ohio legislation. Each trustee will be paid up to seventeen days per day, but not per, per month, excuse, thank you, seventeen days per month. But not more than seventeen days per month and not to exceed two hundred days paid for the entire year of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Yes.
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 Any other business?
Uh, I just got one question, how do you make out that jet excavation up on, I can pull the trailer out?
They pulled the trailer out, they are still using that, they have two more, I think they said, when I talked to him on the phone. They have two more culverts that they're replacing in the area, they should be done probably in midsummer.
So, they'll be there for, till, till then?
Yep.
Hell of a lot longer than I expected or thought, I thought it was just a couple of months.
No, they were doing Colbert, I think, three on Mayfield and two on eighty-seven, if I remember.
Right, got one forty-four left, I saw those lines fill up. So.
Uh, other meetings?
I, um, attended a meeting today, an online meeting for Ohio Erosion Control Special Improvement Districts. It was through a, a law firm, so I got CLE credit for it, but.
You doubled it then?
But, um, it was, uh, uh, I heard about it through, um, Chagrin River Watershed Partners. And Chuck Walder was there and he's talking about how townships can participate and help residents to participate in, um, inland waterways restoration that, that relates to erosion control. And so, just, you know, that information is out there and Chuck's obviously involved, so. If it does come up, it will be interesting, potentially useful, I thought.
And I went to C I had an energy, uh, efficient webinar, uh, as far as, uh, dollar amounts and credits that the township may be eligible for. That was last Thursday. Any other public time? Mr. Kinter?
Well, I wanna revisit the Go Green Grant real quick. Speaking, um, for myself, but as also as a park board member. Um, I think the concern is that we don't really necessarily need every table in the, in the township to match. I mean, I think it would be nice to have them at each specific park match if possible. But on the other hand, if you have a picnic table sitting under a tree in a limb falls during a storm and smashes the tree or smashes the table, does that mean we can't, we can't replace that specific tables, we have to replace every table in the park? I mean, I think that's kind of foolish. Uh, I think the main concern is tables should be safe. That when you sit on it, they're not gonna flip over on you, uh, or chop, it's not, it's not even gonna get full splinters from being wood, you know, on tables. I think those are the things that you really need to be considered versus color and matching. Then this may, the second question I have is the issue of compensation. You're gonna get paid seventeen days per month. Does that mean that if I call you on Friday, Jim, February ninth, you're gonna say, oh, sorry Glenn, this is my day, I'm not getting paid, I'm not gonna take your call?
Never.
No, I'm just saying.
It's up to, so the motion was, you go ahead and.
Can I just explain it real quick?
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm going.
Okay, so, they approved the per, per day rate to get paid. And then, you know, they turn in thirty days or something for the month. I don't wanna pay them thirty days at the daily rate and then, you know, have them, have their whole salary. I don't mean to say it that way, but I want them to get their whole salary for the year. But it's a lot easier budgetarily if it's distributed evenly over the monthly. And so, sixteen point six seven day, um, days of the per diem rate. And so sixteen point six seven day, um, days of the per diem rate works out to the monthly amount that gets you to two hundred by the end of the year. That's why I'm doing that. And last year, they would submit repeatedly, um, the payroll sheets that showed way more than seventeen days. And I'm still only paying them less for now and I didn't have any authorization to do that. Everybody was kind of nice about it and said, sure. So that's the way it worked out. I'll find out in my audits.
Again, my point was township trustees in a three hundred and sixty-five day year job, twenty-four hours a day. And I mean, Jim, if I call you at three in the morning, I hope you would answer my call. That's, that's, you know, they say, no Glenn, this is my day off, you know?
It's, it's the up to that keeps the pay working, so, you know.
Any other public count? Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session, not executive compensation, per personal compensation?
Uh, so moved?
Second.
Hold on, do you'd like to make a comment for it?
Absolutely.
And the time is thirty-six?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCaskey?
Yes.
I'm probably will not be picking any action.
Don't make Ian sit here, come on.
Thank you.
They're moving on your race, Kurt? Great, to dismiss you.
Either.
So you're a bad, all to the rear tires. You don't have that thing where you can switch it, right? Cause you throw your traction in front of your tire as you're going.
They take care of lesser here.
Gotcha.
Yeah, a lot less.
I got you.
Take them flying.
Yeah. Load distribution's altogether different. You got two? Oh, no kidding.
Questioning gives an update on the status of the next.
I can get that for the next week, good.
I know what Keith always, I mean, that's good, but I just thought with an opportunity.
I just thought. They're gonna be busy. They didn't do anything fast.